I'm Chairman of the House.
Good morning, everyone, to our February 3rd meeting. Our Commissioner Thompson is out ill today, so he will not be joining us. So if we would all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I was made aware that our 1140 is not going to be with us, so we will cross that off for today. And was there any other amendments that we needed to do? If not, we'd have a motion to approve.
I would move that we approve the agenda for Monday, February 3rd, 2025.
Well, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up is the meeting minutes of January 21st. Did you have a chance to review those?
I did, and I sent, um, Clerk Miller my changes.
So I would have a motion to approve with the amended changes. So moved? I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, this approving letter of support for Gate 58 at Boise Airport. This was sent to us by the outfitters, um, because the Boise Airport is redoing their gate configuration, and they are leaving off the backcountry gate. So the backcountry planes would not be able to get directly to the terminal. So they're asking for our support. They did send over a template letter, and they sent that on to Clerk Miller to print on letterhead. And so I didn't know if you had any changes or any concerns with that.
I don't see any, um, changes. I would move that we approve the letter of support for Gate 58 at Boise Airport.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I, uh, now that you guys have formally approved it, I will make sure we get it printed off and bring it up before the end of the day.
Okay, perfect. The MOU with Idaho Power Company. So Brian just called me, and he did state that the, um, prosecuting attorney's office has signed off on this and feels comfortable with it. This is for our all-hazard mitigation webpage that we have. So this will allow our, um, fire, I believe, one. Will the fire department be able to get in there? Will it just be you on the, for the Idaho power stuff? You know? We'd ask Idaho Power to share all of their infrastructure information. Do you know who has access to that?
It'll just be me.
It'll just be you, that's what I thought. So this actually just allows our, in this case, we put in there either an employer or vendor, and Juan's a vendor of the county, is our emergency manager. So our emergency manager will be able to get in, look for critical infrastructure when there's a need. And that's really all. So there was concerns over four requests, and that's all been identified in the MOU. So we are good with that. I would move that we sign the memo of agreement with Idaho Power Company. I will second that. Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey. Next up is our Court Service Director, DeeDee Phillips. Good morning.
Pass for a little more time this morning, just to go over yearly stats for the juvenile probation department. So first, I'll do my just regular update. We did complete our full, or at least two of our folks got fully CPR and first aid trained last week. Um, the commissioners had requested that I follow up on some resource connections in our community, see where there's deficits, perhaps, what they can help support. So I'm working on that. Uh, and in that dialogue has been actually, uh, some of the, uh, community stakeholders talking with one another about little things that they could do for one another. So it's been a really, it's been really neat to see, just via emails. Uh, I'm gonna meet with Lindsay Harris tomorrow. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Her and I are gonna meet up and talk about our community, or Valley County-wide, um, resource fair and bring some folks up, uh, that are Region Four-based, because definitely always a pet peeve of mine is that we are part of Region Four, um, which is not just the great region of Ada County. It is also Boise County, Elmore County, and Valley County. They really should be serving us as equal, uh, but all their offices are down there. So it just seems so far to come an hour and a half to serve their region. So, um, I'll be able to, or I'm making connections to bring some of those folks up, and they're, they're happy to do that. Nikki completed post on Friday. She was top of the class, so she-
Will you move that microphone now that I'm looking at it so people can hear you online?
Yep. Um, so she, Nikki, got top of the class of 15 other probation officers. She's very proud. I made a big deal out of it.
Awesome, you should.
Mm-hmm. Uh, UA is just for giggles, for December. December's a tough month for a lot of families in our community. And so we do a lot of drug testing, um, to support hopefully getting through as well as recovery efforts. We did 129 drug tests that we completed last month. I'm sorry, it's February, so in December. Three of them showed positive for alcohol. Two of them showed positive for methamphetamine. Uh, 16 were for THC. Uh, one was for cocaine, and one was opiate that was not fentanyl. In my mind, that's a, that's a good reduction, uh, for that month, to have 129 completed and only have that many positives. That was it, so. Now I'm just gonna move on to our Valley County, the probation stats for 2024. I realized there were some blanks. I got way too fast. I was probably doing five things at once when I put this together, so I will fill in blanks if you see them there. So, um, and I do have available then the comparison to 2023 and 2022, just so you can see. So if you have questions about discrepancies or changes, please ask. So 2024, as of January 28th, the day I put this together, I had juvenile cases were 21 cases. The average person was 16 years of age. Uh, three females, uh, 17 males. The ages were between 14 and 19. It's always good here to remind that the jurisdiction of the, of the Department of, uh, or the Juvenile Justice in Idaho, we can have jurisdiction up their 21st birthday. Of all those, the majority living in McCall, that's nine of them, five in Donley, none in Cascade, and then we have seven that were mostly diversion, that were out of county. Those are folks that came up this summer, partied up here and then left. And then we just have one that's moving for courtesy supervision up in, uh, Coeur d'Alene. And primarily, we still supervise the case, but they just do it for us. They just let us know we withhold jurisdiction. Um, let it compare. And then we had zero juveniles committed to the Department of Juvenile Corrections this year. Costs over $200,000 for one juvenile to go to the Department of Juvenile Corrections. So, uh, for us to be able to utilize resources in our community, uh, to get funding support for that from the state is anywhere from, I think the last request I had for them was like $4,000, $5,000 to be able to access services in our community. And it seems to be a much more fruitful way to spend the money of the state and to bring it here to our community. And it keeps kids out of commitment.
And did look, DeeDee, go back to the, the first, so 21 cases in 24, but we only had 14 and 12 respectively for the prior two years. So we're definitely seeing an increase in the number of cases. Um, age looks like it's about the same, so we're still targeting that freshman sophomore. But no. Yep. For the majority.
Yeah, and it was, uh, we had, which we'll get down further. We had a huge jump in diversion cases this year, too, so. Um-
So two pending?
Yep, yeah, two pending, so they're just right now waiting for other court action.
And that's to IDOS or IDJC?
No, 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 that's just pending case through our system. So they've been, uh, initially charged, and they're waiting there, you know, amid denial sentencing, stuff like that. The next in 2024, eight diversions, uh, this year, or, uh, just on that day. We'll get down, I think, somewhere, I have all of them, yep, way down at the bottom. A supervision probation stat, so what does low versus moderate, high, um, and unsupervised? So probation as a state, juvenile probation, you know, the YLSI. It's a risk assessment tool within our social histories. So it's, um, before a juvenile goes into a sentencing, uh, the judge orders probation department to put together a social history interview, and then, um, uh, a report that we submit to the court for prosecution, their attorney, as well as the judge, with any kind of recommendations or thoughts. To do that, we also use a risk assessment tool that keeps, uh, how we offer our services very, uh, objective. And so they're a low, um, statistically, you should have the least amount of supervision and the least amount of probation in their life, because once we're in there and we're doing, um, it seems to actually cause more damage if it's unnecessary. It, uh, it doesn't allow families and kids to self-correct, which is really what we want, because then they're just waiting for probation to take over, or they have, uh, um, more access to other offenders. So, um, if we have them, uh, doing any kind of crew work, which we don't up here, or doing lots of counseling, which then they cross paths of other kids. Uh, so we just, that's our guide to say, don't give them too much, just give them what they need, and then back off. All the way down to the high risk. High risk, we see up to, uh, once, sometimes twice a week, and we're very much involved, as well as, uh, resource support, uh, for those kids. So we're typically around the moderate, and that means we see them about twice a month, sometimes if they need a little more. Um, but it's, it's minimum of us twice a month, and offering support. And then we have, uh, two unsupervised cases. So diversion for the whole year, as you'll see, uh, we went up to 31 new cases this year, 13 last year, and 12. So we had a huge bump in diversion cases. All of them, I think, were drug violation, or alcohol violations, or some of those natures. Probation, we had 12 cases this year. Those were up compared to nine last year and 10 the year before. Charges that come through here, um, are getting significantly more concerning. We have burglaries, uh, we have arson, possession of a legend drug. Legend drug are, uh, prescription drugs that are then shared. So we're seeing a little uptick in that. Possession of controlled substance, malicious injury to property, possession of drug paraphernalia, frequenting. Kids are typically don't have any idea what frequenting is, which is just being knowingly present where drugs and alcohol are being used. So if that is over and over and a consistent thing with law enforcement, they're gonna let kids know via a charge, stop being around kids that are using. So, not that this is an actual case, but, but we'll say that there's been a lot of concern, say, with the skate park. And so if there's consistent drug use being done there at the skate park, and then you go for like the third, fourth, fifth time, kids are in a huddle, there is a joint being passed, there's six kids there, they are, it's obvious they all knew, even if they weren't using, they could be charged with frequenting, which is a misdemeanor. Um, unlawful possession of pharmaceuticals, again, that's the same idea as the, uh, over-the-counter, uh, or I'm sorry, the prescription drugs. A pretty big case, a significant case that was, ended up with a juvenile in the hospital due to taking medications that were not prescribed to them. Runaway curfew, and then awful unlawful possession of weapons and juvenile DUIs. Um, those are, of course, uh, getting a .02 under the age of 21. And they're 16 typically, 16 and 17 years old.
.02 is what it is on a juvenile?
That's the legal, uh-huh, they'll be up anything over that. Um, I'd like to think they're all .04s or .03s, which is either one or two drinks of alcohol, but they're typically .01, .0, or ., .1, 2, .14. So that's over the legal limit for an adult. Uh, probation violations, we've had three. They were all drug-related this last year. Three of them were the same juvenile. Or three juveniles did all five of those. Detention, we only had one juvenile in detention, and it was only for four days, and that was just only a couple of weeks ago. We'd had no juveniles have to go to inpatient treatment for drug and alcohol issues. Uh, and none committed to DJC. The Idaho Challenge Academy, I like to put on there because they're such an incredible partner. We didn't have any juveniles go to the depart, or to, uh, the academy this year. And then the final page, uh, I can't remember if I even updated that on yours, but just day-to-day stuff, knowing that there was a transition that happened this year. I retained, we, we had less people in our office starting January of 2024, and I started to take on lots of different duties. But I carried a case until, the cases until June-ish, and then, uh, we got Nikki on board, and then I slowly transitioned to her throughout July. So drug tests completed for juveniles was 86. I would say ish, because I'm sure I forgot one somewhere. Home visits, 10. And why I say that, I'm saying this now, 10 is actually really low, because I just didn't have anybody with me to go to home visits. And as I was transitioning, um, as well, just I didn't have time necessarily to go to, with Nikki all the way to the homes. But then if you look at office visits, that's like, that's like doubled, 181. So we just had folks coming into the office. Field visits, field visits are anything outside of school, home, and office. And so sometimes, uh, they're gonna wanna meet me at the library, or they wanna meet me down in, they're in Boise, and I need to connect up with them, so we meet at a Starbucks. So just field grocery store, wherever. Um, school visits, 21. Telephone calls, 94. Texts, that's what kids do, so 330. And do know between telephone calls, home visits, sometimes all those are in one day. So those aren't necessarily separated out. And then emails, juvenile contacts, we made 506 juvenile contacts, and parent contacts is 482. Always important, um, to me that parents are involved in whatever's going on with their juveniles within the juvenile probation world. And so we work hard to stay connected with them about anything that we're saying and doing, so that they always have a place to be able to, uh, you know, say, don't do that, or, uh, please do this, or, it sounds good. So that's the update with the juvenile probation department of 2024.
Thank you. Had a busy year. I know it's getting busier, so.
Yes. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next action. We are gonna have a discussion on wildfire mitigation policies and discuss some implementation plans. Unfortunately, Mara Halavcek is very sick today and is home, so thank you for not coming.
Those two of the fence, okay. So, last, well, January 15th, I attended a, um, legislative subcommittee of the, at the Donley Fire Station. It was the Valley County Fire Working Group. And they were reviewing the comprehensive plan and, um, making some recommendations, so. And then I've had discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission about, they think we need to work towards inclusion of some language in the comprehensive planning in our ordinance to, you know, combat wildfire, especially in our wildland-urban interface. So that's what this discussion is about. We want direction, Mara and I and Annette, Juan, whomever, about what do you want to see included in our comprehensive plan and our ordinances concerning wildfire. So, you know, what, what are, you need to balance the costs, the risks, the benefits. You know, how far is too far? How much is, you know, not going to get a lot of bang for the buck? So, um, I, there's a, you received a packet. Do you want to see more education or implementation of codes? You know, we're currently going through the comp plan revisions, and then we're gonna follow up with the new codes. So the update of the comprehensive plan. Include recommendations from the Valley County Fire Working Group and update our maps. That, I think, is absolutely one of the things we're going to work on. And then include the wildland-urban interface building zones, and within those zones require fire-resistant building materials. So Mara, um, would like to see us replicate something that they're doing over in Plain County, and those are the woo-wee overlays. And in those woo-wee overlays, we have increased standards for construction or subdivision development. Those could include, uh, building materials, water sources, landscaping, or do you want to see that throughout the county, since we're basically one big woo-wee?
I would like to know what the recommendation is from our fire working group. I mean, really, when you get into the woo-wee, it is our, our fire departments are the ones that are there a lot. And, you know, what, what is, what's going to be most impactful? Come on up, guys, anybody that wants to talk over the table?
Um-
We don't have to make a decision today?
No, it's just, so the- Fire Working Group's stance is, is with our, with our lands committee, which deals with hazard assessment. Um, we need to establish, we already have, um, risk model for that, but we need to get more on the ground with that risk model and actually, like, pick out areas, and establish those areas based on, on our findings to, are they easy to defend, not able to defend? And then we need to have those on a layer, um, that's more on the ground than it is now, so that we can determine, so that when you guys, when PNC and the commissioners are looking at a piece of ground, they can sort of snap up and say, you're in an extreme hazard area. And based on being in that hazard area, we have established in our ordinances and comp plan that you have to meet these standards in your building type materials. And this is what has to be done for the landscape to be more fire resilient. So that's, that's a lot of steps right there, just that sentence, our conversation, so. And then we have to determine, how do we establish what are those building material types? What is the landscape like? Well, there is a wildland-urban interface fire code, international fire code. In the state of Idaho, the state never adopts the code, but they allow for, in their addendum, it's, they allow for specific sections of the code to be adopted by county to utilize based on what their needs are in their county. So you have, you have the authorization to use any sections of the codes if you want to within the wildland-urban interface. I would recommend, um, that we don't adopt the entire code, because some of it doesn't meet our need, some of it is we'll never be able to accomplish what's in there because it's extremely restrictive. But there is a chapter in there that deals specific to the type of building materials, which we've all discussed, and that's Chapter 5. And it goes based on what types of materials you should have, how you should be building the home so they're more fire resilient. It isn't just, uh, one of our conversations that is just throwing a Class A roof on top. It's doing the structure so that it meets the Class A roof assembly, so that we have not only the roof, but the entire assembly of the home is a Class A rated home in those specific areas that we deem that. Now, why are we so attuned to this? Is because after the National Fire Council's, uh, depiction of what Valley County is, we are at 98% chance of probability of wildland-urban interface in the woo-wee every single fire season. In Cascade alone, even the city of Cascade, they're at 92%. And as you move down, so we're in the high, high to mid 90s, depending on where you are in the county, but overall, the county's at a 98%. When you look at what are the probabilities of wildland-urban interface issues? And continuing to build in the wildland-urban face, we don't wanna inhibit that growth, but we wanna make sure we're meeting the standard to make it more resilient, so that one, it's safe for our individuals, two, it's safe for the people living there, and we, we have some community fire resiliency in place.
People can also get insurance.
And it could help with insurance, um, because we're meeting the standard. Now, insurance is a whole different ballgame, because insurance has their own investigators. They don't, there isn't much validity or teeth into the ISO rating, the Idaho service rate, because we don't have to use it, based on statute here. Insurance company can supersede that and say, I don't care what it says there, we're gonna, this is your new rating. So there's not much teeth there to say, well, this is what it should be. Um, I don't know if that'll change, uh, since people are losing their insurance. It's sort of, uh, the insurance thing is sort of, uh, you get what you ask for. Uh, in my 20th year, we've been asking for insurance, that things were gonna change on the landscape until insurance got evolved. Well, guess what, insurance is involved, uh, and people are losing their insurance now. And insurance has stepped up to the plate and said, this has to, we have to do something. Uh, and it's all, all levels that we have to do something. So from our local level to state level, we have to figure out how we're gonna be more fire resilient. Um, I mean, it's a lot of money, um, to fight fires, so that's a big thing. I mean, we just had that conversation on Fridays, and it's a lot of money to do those things, and, and, uh, but we continue to build there, so.
And, you know, I look at it like, so I could do all the right things, and my neighbor, who is a quarter mile away, half mile away, doesn't do the right thing, and I'm gonna get their embers. And so you either have everybody do the right thing, and so you know that you're in an area that's more protected, or you don't.
And it's all about the ember loading. It is, it isn't necessarily about, you know, all of the things play a percentage, but it's the ember loading that we're concerned about. The more ember loading you have, the farther the embers can go and create more issues down the road. And if you have more unhealthy things or not community resilient enough, the ember load is sufficient to produce and advocate for more fire growth. So ember loading is the key. Uh, in order to do that, we have to do some great things on the landscape, and we have to have, um, utilizing Chapter 5 or portions of Chapter 5 based on our risk assessment model that we build in a map. We could, we could make more community resilient type homes. Now, um, if you look at the big fires around the country, there's always these homes that are sticking out of one out of 20 homes. And it's one because of the type of material the home is, two, just the aspect and slope and how things were done in the home, or the property didn't allow for the fire behavior to continue. There's all kinds of things that come up to that, but generally, it's because those were someone who was conscientious in the fact that they did a little extra work, and everybody else were able to save their home or portions of their home. So we have an opportunity. Yes, it's gonna be expensive for the builder. Yes, it's gonna be expensive for someone to build it, build there to a point, because we're doing different things, not, not just a regular stick home. I mean, we have, um, correct my terminology, but it's not, like I said, it's not just throwing a Class A fire-resistant roof. It's the assembly underneath the roof that has to be Class A rated as well. Say that correctly? Yeah. So there's things you have to do, so that, because just throwing Class A roof on top, there's still opportunity for embers to get under that Class A roof, and it's not prepared, then you're gonna have issues as well. Uh, and you'll still have, where it's not, uh, community fire resilient enough, so.
Everybody's using hardy board anymore, aren't they?
But it's not just the hardy board. You have to do everything behind the hardy board to be fire resilient as well. So we've learned that. Just throwing a hardy board or throwing up a, a Class A roof shingle that's fire resistant isn't enough. We have to have, the inner workings of the building has to be all fire resistant in those extreme areas. So that means an extra added cost, uh, to get to that point.
Pretty so expensive, that's what I-
I understand that.
My heart just, you know, it's like, yeah, we need to do whatever we can do, and then it's kinda like, okay, well, no local family will ever be able to build a home again. And that's, there has to be some kind of a balance in there. And what do people, you know, here want? Because literally, I mean, the cost could be enough that locals are really gonna struggle to build their home.
And we just have to look at from, the thing to look at is, is when we get the hazard assessments built in the lands committee and fire working group, we can look at those and see where those areas that we really have to be concerned with, and then we can take portions of Chapter 5 and establish those and say, if you build in this area, there you do a subject, these are the things you do. Not everybody has to do it throughout the county, but based on what we've assessed, this, if this is an extreme area, you wanna build there, okay. But these are the measures you have to take to put structures in that place. And that's just from the slope and aspect of what the geographical area looks like and what we need to do. The density types, because density, we don't want homes that are seven feet apart. We wanna have them to have enough buffer around each home so we can better protect them in those areas. And then we just determine, you know, easy to defend or not easy to defend, or extremely hard to defend. And then we'll determine, or whether E and Z and U will determine in code and subdivision ordinance out of what things in the woo-wee are we applying to those specific areas. So if you wanna build in that area, great, but it's gonna cost you more.
And that makes sense to me to do it based on, you know, extreme, not extreme, you know? I mean, actually looking at what's on the ground, and that's gonna be, it could change. I mean, that, that bubble that we put over this area could change in time as things become less extreme or more extreme. But that would also allow areas within the county where we could identify, this is gonna be for housing that may not be as expensive. And also, not zoning, but there could be a, this is a good place to put something that's more dense and that we wouldn't have to put all those expenses to it.
And we have to understand that our entire landscape is woo-wee, even though pasture, we have lots of pasture, that's pasture grass is woo-wee. We saw that on the other side. When you have pasture grass, we had, you know, 12 and 14-foot flame lanes that went from lava all the way over across the mountain in that quick. So everything we have in the valley floor is considered woo-wee as well, especially since we're not having enough cattle come through and raise things. And our climate has changed how fast we butt out, and then nothing wants to eat that dry stuff. So there's just lots of opportunity for- So there's just lots of opportunity for, we can establish that. I mean, the Lands Committee, that's why it's theirs, we established those hazards. We can build that map and show everyone that needs to look at it. Here's the problem areas, and here's what we need to do to make it more resilient. Now, the more resilient, what it does is make it safer to defend, easier to defend. And we possibly could save some homes or stop it before it reaches the homes. Doesn't mean we're not going to lose homes. It just means it gives us a better opportunity to have better successes as fires coming through the landscape. And that's what it'll do for us. And it'll be safer, and again, their benefits are, one, we're safer, two, you, your insurance might be manageable. Or people are actually willing to insure you because of the work that we're doing.
Do you know how many homes in Valley County are not insured because of fire at this point?
I heard last year, just in the Dolly District, four people lost their insurance and had to shop. Most of them got insurance again because they all found out where they could get some, but I heard it was extremely expensive in certain areas, especially on the western corridor between us. And there was some on Warren White and Road as well, on the west side that had lost their insurance and had to find some.
I think the worst of that's yet to come.
I think that's.
It's coming every year, I mean, they're, they're here all the time, they're in the station, they're like, looking at diff, different areas, and they're, they're going out and evaluating it on a yearly basis now.
And, and the reason why I ask that is if we can improve our comp plan in some of these models to help that, I can see how that's really important. Also, the health and safety of you guys is utmost importance. I can, I can only imagine what it's like on the ground. I do think on those maps, like you mentioned, there is a lot of pasture ground where there's a lack of grazing. I think there's other pasture ground where there is a lot of grazing. And in that meeting, they had some of it pretty high, high risk still, especially where it's irrigated pasture that's. So I think when you're looking at those maps, don't just assume every pasture ground is still a high risk, dry, weeded out type field.
Right, and you have to realize that they're, they're looking from a different elevation than we will because our, our working group is so well established with the local stakeholders. We're able to look at those specific parcels and say, this is a well-used, well-irrigated pasture. It meets a different standard than any other pasture because this is the work the farmer's doing, this is the work. We have cattle going through for the rancher, those types of things, those will play a part. And we can, we can take particular polygons on that and give it a different rating. Because we're on the ground, that's the best part about the Fire Working Group, is all the stakeholders are involved, and we can get good data to put into the lands map.
We have some really cool technology opportunities, I think, with new wildland technologies to look at the community, to look at the county and look at the risk areas. Like, I don't feel like we're at a point where we can say, one way or the other, like, there should be a blanket rule for a specific area because I think it depends on where the development is, what the fuels in that area look like, and then what the developer wants it to look like at the end of the day. One of the big issues in California, and when we have these fires that run from the wildland into the urban area, it becomes an urban conflagration, there's fuel pathways that lead from the wildland into a community. And there's technology that looks at all those fuel pathways and then shows you ways to areas that you can put fuels mitigation treatment in or change the development. And it doesn't need to be a clear cut, it can be a park, it could be a golf course or green space that separates fuel pathway.
Do you use that new software that NFF has, the tenders?
Land Tender, yeah, there's, we, we look, we've looked at three. We've looked at Land Tender, which has a different name now, I think, Xylo Plan and Dark Horse. And then we've got our robo, our mobile risk assessment data. So we, we're kind of demoing all of them to see what would work the best. And it's really kind of using all of them in their different contexts to get a big picture of what the risk looks like in different areas. Because I could see a day, and I use some hypotheticals, like we have the Red Ridge proposal that's on the, on Red Ridge, it's in a Wuii area. That could be completely different than a development that's on the valley floor. And maybe a, a development on the valley floor that abuts timbered public land like that could be an issue because we have that kind of fuel pathway. So I feel like we're at a point where we just need data and more data on maps to look at different areas. And then when we have a development coming in one area, we can look at that. What the developer sees is the, the big picture, and then how to make it as resilient as possible. When we looked at Chapter Five of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, and that, sorry to highlight it, there's a ton of it, and she could explain it really well. But it definitely changes the, the scope of construction, the cost of construction, the inspections on the, on the construction. But you, I mean hypothetically, if you follow the code, you could really make a development in the Wuii that's pretty defensible along there. But it's well beyond having a metal roof.
If we do it, and we set those Wuii areas, and we lay out exactly what's going to be required, a developer that walks through the doors already has an expectation of this is what's going to happen. And upfront, they may say, that's too expensive to develop, and I'm going to leave it alone, you know, I'll go here instead. But we're giving tools upfront, so we don't have to put a lot of those things on during a hearing. It's already set in code, these are the things you're going to have to do here. So it ends up being a more cohesive development before they even make an application to us.
Yeah, I think that's the benefit of using data and some evidence-based stuff is it's not arbitrary. We're not saying arbitrarily you need to do all these standards. We're coming up with standards at a county level to say, if you develop in this area, this is the expectation, whether it's fuels mitigation or construction type.
Cindy's been wanting to say something, we'll let her go next. But then I want to talk about dry hydrants, because I, that, my brain doesn't wrap around the dry hydrants.
I have a whole list of things here that we had put together based upon everything that they just said. I'm looking for direction from the board about what we're going to write. Before I spend a bunch of time writing codes, I want to know that the board has an appetite for it.
But I need to hear from everybody on what their recommendations is before I can make an informed decision on what that should be, so. Tell me about a dry hydrant, why would we have a dry hydrant? I mean, hydrants are water, right?
Sometimes dry hydrants, so if we place the dry hydrants correctly, and we can look at, when we look at the data, where dry hydrants would be effective. So when you have a dry hydrant, you establish a vehicle or apparatus or water source at the one end of the hydrant, which gives you more access at a distance away from that to provide water to whatever areas. So if we have a highly populated area where we know that traffic's going to be an issue, we could dry hydrate it, set a rig where we know we can get a rig in and out easier, run the water to the end of the dry hydrant, and then run our equipment off of it and still supply the water needed for that. And then others are using dry hydrants in ponds and water sources that are readily available at any time for extra water sources as we move throughout the county.
It's not really dry, and when you turn on.
I could just draw one real quick.
That'd be great. Because I'm totally confused, and I think the public would be too. I think one time, right after we talked about a subdivision and wagon wheel, and you said there was a dry hydrant, and that absolutely made no sense to me whatsoever. It's kind of like.
We have a few throughout our district, we even have one in, we have like two or three in Tammerack, where it's so steep, and they have homes that are sort of off the road, and they're skiing and ski out. So from the road, we hook up to the dry hydrant. We pump water to the top so that we can fight the fire on those cottages that don't have a road to it.
Okay.
So we just take our hoses up, run off of the dry hydrant that now has water being supplied by a hydrant and the truck.
So it's a permanent infrastructure connected to a.
Line just goes down and goes into the water, and then the water level in here will be whatever water level that's at. So it's just called a dry hydrant, it's just static, and then we suck out of that, sucks out of the pond or the lake.
And you can put them at creeks like Round Valley, Briz. Road Department can connect to them, to water roads, that kind of thing.
That totally makes sense.
Kind of the idea is like a good screen put in so that you guys are just getting clean water.
Yeah, on the end of it, works in that pond like that. Yeah, as opposed to like most hydrants are, are under pressure on a water system. They're, they're, it's dry because they're, we have to physically draft water out of them with the truck. Is why their terminology is a dry hydrant.
Well, that makes a lot more sense.
Kind of the idea was the road department could put them in throughout the county and maintain them, and then use them, and then the fire departments or sipper whomever can use them when needed.
Jeff's saying no, but Jeff.
Okay, Jeff doesn't want to.
That doesn't mean he doesn't need to, he may not want to, but that's.
Are there issues with freezing in the winter?
Generally not with the dry hydrants.
There's, there's no issue.
They're really cost-effective, they're really.
It's readily available.
Probably for a lot of them, like, just thinking from a rancher side, let's say we put one in on Eagles Nest, right? In, in the winter, when you don't need water, there's no water available, right? But as long as we're flowing water in the summer, then, so I guess freezing probably wouldn't matter for, on, on a lot of the cases.
They're mainly used for summer, but you can install them so they, we have one at that.
We call it landing.
Yeah, a couple of them, that new water, you know, water sports.
I got water sports.
That one too. Next to the highway, has a dry hydrant in it, and it'll work year-round. Where it goes in, there's, they account for a bunch of area for freezing. We have some in Pale Lake that you work year-round as well.
I wonder if there's not some grant funding in order to do that kind of thing? I would think that maybe that's a good, on saying what?
I said, right now, there isn't.
How much does one cost a week, on average?
I don't know, I think it totally depends.
Depends on what you.
I think a simple one, it's just excavation, it's a pipe.
So it's not going to be a budget situation, maybe, if we, if we put a few in throughout the county right now on our dime? And then require developers to do this also?
Yeah, the big cost is just the labor and the, the equipment.
Do you have proposed areas where you think that they would be best suited?
We established those in our risk map. We're looking at all kinds of like deployment strategy and then say, hey, it would be nice if we had a water source closer than this water source. Here's a water source right here, we could use the dry hydrant.
Is, is that a big challenge right now in Valley County, with the lack of water sources?
Yeah, in the rural area.
Well, everybody has hydrant systems, so we're dependent on what we can carry on our, on our apparatus. And then how far we have to shuttle that apparatus, and what's the turnaround.
So Cindy, when you were talking about where we want to focus, for me, after reading all of this, what was just said is something I think is really critical for the county. It's time that we start figuring out, being a forested county, how we protect our residents. I think it's really time that we figure out what the evacuation rounds are. I know that BSU is asking, Mara, and I think one, you were probably in on that, to work with them, they actually are going to do evacuation rounds for us, which we're very blessed to be able to partner with BSU right now, that won't cost us anything. Other counties are going to have to pay some money for all of that. So I think evacuation rounds are critical. I think subdivisions, I think we need to identify what those subdivisions need if they are going to be in an area that has extreme or moderate fire danger. Everything here. I do think that there are some building materials that we need to work on in our code, and what that's going to look like depending on what those areas are. But I, I think education is important too. So, you know, you're asking, do we want education, or do we want to do these other things? I think we have to do both. And I think Mara's wildfire mitigation program can be the education piece. But I think some of this should be put into code and just be there. And so it's not, it's, it's an expectation. Everybody can go online and look at our codes and know exactly what's going to be expected based on the area that you're in. That was, that's after I'm reading this and being here for five years and seeing what's happened in the last few years in wildfire. I'll tell you what, the nights that I haven't slept are when those fires are going on, and how we're going to replace housing, and how we're going to, you know, help our locals. So definitely, this is important for our community. There are some things, I mean, even the water protection for some of this is key and critical, that we try and stop fire before we impact our water any more than we already have with the fires that are going on. And that, what is, what's your concerns, what's your input?
I agree with it, it's going to cost people more money, and it's going to take, some of it's going to take a lot more time in our office, or whosoever's office is going to do this. Some of it we already do implement, so it's not going to be that big of a, it'll be a big change, but it won't be bad.
I would think there's just going to be some checkpoints on some of it. I was very surprised to read that we don't require an input from the fire department for driveways. I mean, every county I've ever built in, we had to have, fire department's the first place I had to go. I had to have a fire permit before I could ever even go get an access permit. We don't do that here.
Just for a shared driveway, I intend to, we're involved, no, not a, not for a single family.
We talked to Cindy in the last couple of weeks about that, and I think, oh, three fire districts are game to have a driveway permit. And like you said, I know most jurisdictions have a driveway permit.
I, I did not realize, we did not have one. I didn't realize that there was, you know, if we've got 8% grade on some of this stuff, you guys can't protect a home. I mean, talk about it, if I was an insurance person coming and looking at something, that'd be the first place I'd look. I can't get a fire truck, do you? You're not going to fire insurance.
I wish they were only 8%. With good access.
Really?
There's some steep ones, yeah.
So the, the sequence on that permit, is that before we issue them an access permit with the road department? I mean, is there.
Final, in, in other jurisdictions, fire department's your first stop. You got to have the fire guys look at it to see if, you know, they can actually access the home.
And they can provide something to us before we issue the permit?
And that's throughout the county, so any building permit or just ones on grade?
I would say any building permit, I've never had anything other than, I don't, I don't know.
What, what do you guys say? You're the ones that are having to take your trucks out?
Yeah, I think ideally, you, you do it on every driveway. But we would need to come up with a standard that we're all enforcing similarly.
Whether it's county ordinance and it's outside of a fire district, who, who inspects it at that point? It's out of a fire district.
Always make things difficult, Steve.
Or Steve.
Always the hard questions, yeah.
Say, closest, the closest jurisdiction.
All pretty close to Yellow Pine, isn't it?
Yellow Pine has a fire district.
So you want to see this before a building permit or before an approach permit? The road department issues the approach permit.
Before the building department.
Before the building permit. But they could already go, they could go build their driveway and then find out that they can't get approval from the fire department?
That's what I'm saying, I think they need the fire department permit first. It goes to the road department for the access permit, then to the building department.
So before the approach?
Yes. That would be the first stop, in my opinion.
Hear that, Jeff?
Yep.
So, and then who's going to check to make sure it's built according to the ride department permit says?
Once it gets off the right of way, why would we care?
Because we're actually protecting health and human services and, you know, the.
Can't inspect private driveways. We can inspect a right-of-way portion, but once it goes back that 35 feet and goes straight up the mountain.
If it's a county ordinance, it's, it's.
If it's an ordinance, yes. But we can advise, we can't tell them to do anything on their private property.
Well, if it's a county ordinance, and they don't meet the ordinance, and they don't get a building permit.
Then it goes, yes, then it goes to Annette or wherever.
They just won't issue it, right? They have to have some other, I mean, I've had to put in really expensive driveways to get to a steep block before, so. Mind inform, and it is, I mean, that gives me pause because we're protecting the public as a whole. But we're also, the cost of some of this is going to be, you know, a lot. And I'm really, it gives me pause to look, when we're looking at a 4,000 square foot house has to have a sprinkler system. Because when they did that before, that was like, I don't even know that they ever enforced it. They tried to do that in Treasure Valley a few years ago and it was such a big deal that I don't even know that they ever enforced it down there. So I don't, I, I need to research that one a bit more before I.
Some of that guy exempted from the code.
Sprinklers for residential have been exempted from the code since oh eight-ish. In the McCall impact area, we've had some around the lake where they cannot put a driveway and that meets the standard. And so they've done sprinklers in lieu of access and we put in stand pipes from the road down to the residence. So we can run house lines. But that's because they need a million dollars in excavation work to make their driveway work. It's just not cost effective.
Well, and that's something that then, you know, that's when you look for a mitigating tool. There may have to be some of that. We mitigate in other ways, but if there is a way to do that.
So if they can't get a driveway less than the eight percent, I mean, let's look at some samples like Tito Trail. How would you mitigate that?
After it's already built?
Or.
Prior.
Or, yeah, before the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah, if there's an option to, to have them sprinkle it or something like that to make it safer. To make it easier for us to defend or to run a, a standpipe of a true dry hydrant system like Juan has done in, in Amtrak. To get water there without having to drive the truck up the, up the driveway.
So, so it will be a permit from the fire department and that will either have a driveway approved to grade or an alternative system.
That would make sense.
So you guys will work on those standards?
What about that twenty thirteen clause that's in our appropriate county ordinance?
What is the twenty thirteen?
Anything before twenty thirteen.
You want to come to my.
Oh, sorry. There's a division in twenty thirteen, any, is it subdivision, Cinda? Oh, you've got it right there.
Yeah, it's anything plotted prior to twenty thirteen, wrote superintendent, we'll work with the applicant on a safe approach. And that's just for the approach, the landing area. We'll, of course, have to rewrite all of this. They'll have to be a, I mean, I don't know that we exempt lots plotted prior to a certain date anymore.
I'm thinking Crown Point, Cabart Ridge over here, you know, they were plotted back in, well, West Mountain, platted back in the fifties and sixties. Some of these driveways people are putting in are just like, holy smokes. I know exactly where these three guys are coming from. It's like, no stinking way.
I don't think we exempt anything because if I live in Crown Point and I did the right thing and I'm living right beside somebody that now has to do something different and their house burns down, so does mine.
Right, exactly.
What about those subdivisions that were plotted years ago and they don't have adequate access? I mean, we're talking the CRs, West Mountain.
So.
I feel it would be.
Thoughts? That they are going to have to get some kind of a waiver or some kind of a mitigation. Because these guys can't go fight those CRs. As a real estate agent, I wouldn't even show any of the property in CR. Those are cam plots, in my opinion. And so it's, if you're going to build a structure, they can't get fire insurance over there. They can't get anything over there. So if you're going to build a structure, you're going to have to mitigate. You're going to have to do sprinklers. You're going to have to do something. Cause we can't get a fire truck back in there. There's no way. I don't think we exempt anything. I think they have to come and talk to you guys and figure out what it is that they need to do to mitigate. Now, we can leave this open. The public can reach out. We should have this conversation, you know, on a level to see what the public wants. But.
So Juan, what do you say about the CRs? I mean, what would you do in that area if?
We do it right now. So we don't provide structural protection when there's wildland urban interface because I'm not going to send somebody up those roads that can't, that it's only one way in, one way out and they can barely get up there with a smaller type engine. I can't send real engines up there because I'll never get them backed down. Just coming down is ridiculous. Doing ambulatory there is ridiculous. Sometimes we have to throw them in the back of the pickup because I can't get the ambulance to the house.
So how would you address this permit for driveway prior to a building permit?
I don't know how to fix something that's already eroded in there with houses that are attached, coming off those little spur Jeep trails.
I don't know how.
We don't know how to do that and they're not in a fire district.
There's already a house there, then you're not going to mitigate anything.
I'm talking about future.
If they want to put a house there, then I think that the public deserves to know that, first of all, you're not going to get a fire truck up there. You're not going to get an ambulance up there. And when I was in real estate, there was many times that no one disclosed, discloses that. I think that it's disclosure requirement to those that are wanting to put a house up there. You're not going to have fire. You're not going to.
If they're building a new road, you could make them subject to that, but.
But I'm saying about a legally plotted lot. Do we deny them a building permit?
That's what, I don't have enough information to make that statement right now.
Or you could have. In lieu, right? The access for that subdivision doesn't meet a road standard, the grade standard, then anything up there that's built could be sprinkled. It could be built in accordance with chapter five of the Urban Interface Code.
Well, so there's some kind of disclosure upfront that, you know, doesn't meet current access.
So an example would be Black Hawk, Kage, and two, the Alquist stuff, right? They don't have water supply, so it was sprinklers in lieu. So any house that's built up there has fire sprinklers. Cause there's no water supply. That's what we're doing up there, right? Like we could do the same kind of thing in any area like that where you don't meet access standard.
That's what I'm looking for is how do we write our code to address that?
Yeah, good. Similar, I don't know if it was that, or whatever, Landale and Call Review and Hilltop, all those roads, we can't even access those unmaintained county roads to, to get there, let alone have a driveway that'll meet any standard off of those.
We've had nothing but heartburn over some of those since I've been on this board.
And those are residential sprinkler systems. They're not to prevent the house from burning down. They're, they're meant to help give people time to get out because we don't have time to get in there and help them. So they're really a life safety fire sprinkler system.
So I think that answers it. We can start on the driveway with that. The landscaping requirements. The fire wise landscaping, three foot hard surfaces, what do you think would be best to do? And if we're going to require something like that, is it going to be countywide? Is it only going to be in the fire hazard areas? And then who's going to make sure that's done? Are we going to do that before we do a certificate of occupancy?
I think for me, it would be dependent, again, that overlay. If you're in an extreme overlay, you have a different requirement than if you're in a moderate overlay. So I think that's going to be called out in those overlay areas. If it's, you're in an extreme, then yeah, I would think that you are going to have to have defensible space around you and you could do that by hardscaping. You could do that by zero scaping. You could do that in different ways. And yeah, I think it needs to be done before you go building, get a final on your building permit.
Who's going to enforce that though? Is it going to be another inspection for us to have to do or?
If it's an ordinance, then, you know, that it may be the, the fact that on your final, they have to have it done. That would be, I think, the best thing to do. If there's any, people find all their houses in the winter, so I'm just thinking about that. So that would mean code enforcement would have a, a call the next year. I've given them so long in order to get it done and it becomes something that is a follow-up permit. Yes, we're creating more work and yeah, I understand the obligation of taxpayers to do that. But at the same time, if, if not now, when? After the fire?
So, I know, but is it going to be code enforcement that's going to make sure they do that or is it going to be the certificate of occupancy?
So can it be something that is melding of those two? Because if it's in the summertime, you're getting a certificate of occupancy. That could be one of the checkpoints for that. I mean, it's kind of like when people, you get finals all the time where you aren't able to do, you know, your concrete front steps because it's in February. And then they have to go back and do a re-inspect.
But they wouldn't issue a final on that, would you?
No, you get it temporary.
Is it there a way to do it somewhat retroactively where it's on the burden of the homeowner to prove within twelve months they have this landscaping that fits? I don't know how you would. If, if they don't, I don't know what that procedure would be to make them or to.
Like give them three months after final occupancy to get it done?
Twelve, depending on when they, you know, a year. I don't, but I don't know how you would enforce that retroactively. That if, you know, so let's say ninety percent of the homeowners do this landscaping, how do you make the other ten percent? Do you withhold?
Well, that leads to the discussion about citations and letting code enforcement do citations.
With an accompanied deputy? Possibly.
That will be, the sheriff is not interested in that. So what is something that we can realistically, I mean, is the sheriff department going to issue landscaping tickets?
I think this is a greater conversation that isn't going to be resolved today. I think that that needs to be researched on what we can do through code enforcement and what can't be done.
Maybe it's just a simple fee or a fine, which is, I get a citation. I understand that. But I think it would be so much easier to do it more retroactively than to make your office have to do it right now. Cause landscaping dies. Even on our P and Z, when we require a commercial entity to have landscaping, we give them, if it dies within twelve months, you have to redo it, right? We all know trees die really easily. As, you know, on a hard winter with no snow, you're going to lose all your landscaping. So that's why I think they need time. It can't be done right now.
Right.
When they get their certificate of occupancy or.
Makes sense. And then everybody, that's normally the first thing they want to do when they move in anyway, is their landscaping, but.
Or, and then maybe it's as simple as, I don't know that you can do this. Can, can you, can you take back their certificate of occupancy?
Revoke it.
So if they don't have this landscaping done, then their occupancy is going to be revoked. Maybe that's a simpler way than going through code enforcement.
But then they're not going to move out.
Yeah, but then, yeah, if there is a subdivision, then you, you put it upon the CCNRs and HOA to make sure it's done.
I mean, of course, there's going to be.
Individual sites?
If it's in a subdivision, you've got a condition of approval on individual sites, then HOA can enforce that. And if they don't enforce it, then we have another.
Either ways will be active enough to enforce it.
I've been in some.
Especially a new one.
I've been in some before that would have been, are active enough to make me take in my trash can.
And then the, another one is the, well, then Urban Interface Fire Protection Plan requirements and the subdivision regulations. Currently, a fire professional is preparing those plans. And then the fire departments have gone out to make sure that they're basically implemented for us. There is no long-term maintenance requirements in the code at this time. And then we're kind of wondering if Mara should be reviewing those instead of the fire departments.
I think it would make sense for Mara to do it now that we brought it in, her position in-house. I think that makes sense on what you guys think.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling. I don't mind assisting in it, but I think it should be a county deal that signs off on them as opposed to the fire districts.
And I would like to probably see some review after a certain number of years. Cause sure, you can start out with a really fire resistant landscaping and then five years it's overgrown.
Right. And so how do we require that in continued maintenance?
If you answer that, the entire nation will follow you.
Oh, a challenge.
No one knows that right there.
I mean, we can at least put it.
Police service doesn't even know that.
Do our due diligence for now. We can have it in code. That's a whole different conversation.
Well, we might be able to weave it into a development agreement of some sort. We can, we can try.
It's part of the education landscape, so. Time in the Midwest and, and then East Coast, it's a cultural thing. Where they're, they're logging adjacent, they're logging within the subdivisions, they're burning acres, they're continuing their landscaping. And it's just because over years, it becomes a cultural thing and this is what you do to your properties. So with education and with them seeing that what those landscapes are going to look like in those housing, housing areas. We'll get a lot of people just doing it because one, their neighbor's doing it and two, this is what we have to do to be fire resilient and eventually it happens.
I think after the fires in California, I mean, why would people not be out there looking around their property and saying, what can I control?
Right. So that, there's a lot of education and then there's the fear factor, of course, of what does my place look like right now? What do I have to do this summer? And then we just keep building that. I mean, Donley starts with fourth graders and we're teaching them about fire resiliency and how fire landscape looks. When they become adults and they live here, they're already going to be attuned to this is what I should be doing to make sure my place doesn't burn out.
You know, they're going home that night to their parents going, you need to take down this, this, this.
That's the other reason.
That's the reason to do it.
Teaching their parents and nagging them until they do it.
So then the other thing, what's the name of the software that identifies the pinch points? The zilo?
Zilo.
Zilo, zilo. It was a demonstration, were you still on there? Did you see it? Yeah. And it identifies the pathways where fires lead into the higher density communities and where you can do effective firefighting, that type of thing. And whether or not we want to require that in some of our largest subdivisions to do that type of analysis.
I'm really looking forward to seeing this map. I think it'll give us a lot more perspective on how to move forward as well, once we see.
It's not just fireworks to do. We have the all lands group, it just started. I just went to the first meeting last week and using the land tender in, in collaboration with the others that are going, they're all creating this, this platform that anybody can use for up to three years, of course, because that's all it's paid for. But we can do that initialized thing and then we can determine. And what's nice about it is like, we can go in and manipulate it to be like, okay, we had a fire go through here or we had work go through here. So what did that do to the landscape? What did that do for the fire potential? So we could change that as we go. So we're going, we're going to have this map that's going to utilize multiple avenues to get the data. And then we can establish those zones. And then like, we can say, okay, we know that on the western corridor, we have these burn areas. Now let's alleviate those burn areas because we know we're not going to get much fire spread in specific areas in the burn. So let's take those polygons out and what did it do to the landscape below it? For potential building, what, what did it change it from extreme to just a high or a moderate high? I don't know, but we can utilize that. And then if there's treatments throughout, whether it be in the interior or in adjacent areas, the state and federal, we can put those in there as well and see what it does to the landscape. Zillow plan, there's a lot like plant tender and, but what zillow plan does, it actually shows fire progression. You can even use real-time fire progression on where it's at. So you understand, okay. Well, we're spending dollars over here in project A, but we really should be spending some of those dollars over here in project B because we're going to get more bang for our buck and help the stock spread into the community. That's the great part about the zillow plan one. It gives us an opportunity to see where our dollars are being spent, mitigation efforts throughout the projects and say, this is a great project, but really we should be emphasizing more on these particular areas that are more at a higher risk with the current funding that's available for mitigation process.
So I think that yes, large subdivisions should do this type of analysis, in my opinion. If you're going to develop in a high extreme area for wildfire, then I think the more information that we can glean upfront, the better for a good delivery at the end of the day.
We may already have a lot of that information in the data that we have. So it could be reference the current data with the fire working group and it says, here's where you're building. Cause we're going to, we're going to be using, utilizing that, not just a resource for the stakeholders, but it's for everyone. And the developer can see, yep, I, I can see the data that shows I'm in this high hazard and here's the fire growth. Maybe I shouldn't put houses right here. I should move them over a hundred yards because this is going to be the, the lethal pass resistance for fire to come through.
So would that be part of this wildland urban interface fire protection plan where the fire professional meets with the fire department? You could provide them with that information and they could. You could provide them with that information, and they could reference that and see, here's the polygon where you're going to build, and here's the data associated with fire risk according to that. Then it wouldn't add that extra cost, um, to the developer, that we already have that data for them in the county and saying, here's what we're looking at. And it should be pretty updated data, because we're going to be updating it, um, to go along with our county wildfire protection plan.
Is it, is it not something that you could provide when you are, um, asked to give information on a upcoming project through P and Z, and you guys comment on it? Would, would that be something you could put in your comments?
It'd just be one of our little things that says, referenced in whatever thing that Cinda will have for, to give to her P and Z people, that says, here's the map that shows the polygon, here's what they determined for risk. Um, yes, the developer has reviewed that.
Seems like that's a really clean way to get that information to the applicant.
And whoever that forester is that's doing that, they should be referencing that too, to say, oh, I can see that there's a fire path here, here's, I should probably spend a little extra time on seeing what they need to do to mitigate that for that subdivision in that polygon.
For the fire departments, is this putting an added burden, where you think that there is cost to you, because you have to have additional employees, additional hours? And what kind of a burden are we placing upon you? Or is that mitigated because we're going to try and take care of some of this fire risk, so that it's, end of the day, you're not as likely to have fire smells here?
I don't think it's going to be added cost to our fire marshal's office, I don't, I mean, we're already doing a lot of that.
A lot of it.
Um, I know that all the people who deal with Fire Mar, we're working hand-in-hand with Mara on those, on those things, and then the foresters, they, they're in their, they're doing these plans, they're talking to our fire marshals too, so sort of collaboration of information, already sharing.
Really have to add something to Mara's department as we go through this?
You know, the developments have to do the wildfire mitigation plan that goes to P and Z, and I think if we add the data, like, land tender stuff, if we had a xyloplan for the county, then that stuff would get incorporated into the, um, mitigation plan for the planning and zoning packet, and I think those tools have more benefit than just on the development front. They also add to where we spend time and resources in fuels mitigation at a county level, perhaps where we grant funding to certain areas, or strategize to give grant funding to, you know, the, the really, areas that really, um, pique our interest in the data. Um, I think when we saw this, these tools, and we've, and I use the west side of the county as an example, like, we keep having fires over here, and I think we all think it's just bad luck, when in fact, it's probably the topography, the prevailing weather patterns, how quick it dries out, and all these different factors that lead it to be more susceptible to wildfire, particularly West Mountain, the Tamarack area, potentially the Red Ridge area, at development, and to have that kind of data to look at it and say, okay, here's the risk, and here's the things, areas we really need to focus on to mitigate the risk. I mean, it's definitely going to benefit development, it's also going to benefit our communities, right? Even the city of Cascade, if we can identify those.
Is that software that we need to buy for the, uh, emergency managers department? And you share with others? Is that software?
We're determining what those programs will look like, uh, and then, then we'll look at what the funding needs to be for.
Because xyloplans, like, $20,000 to $30,000 for the whole county. It takes about 10 weeks to, um, put together, and then you would have it until you decide to redo it.
Update it.
Be working with Mara.
Some of the others are prescription, are subscription. Um, and then, one thing that we did ask is how do we layer some of the data we already have, that's on the ground, like the mobile risk assessment? Um, and they're, they can all do that. And then we were, Cara is, Cara is a big part of this, so she's seen what we already have built, and what we can utilize, and do we need to buy that one, or are we already doing it here, or I can just tweak and then add it to this other program? So we're all in cahoots of what's going to be the best bang for our buck, and how much to get all the data that we're looking for in the future. So we're not to that point yet of what that's going to cost. Right now, the main thing is, is, um, with the evacuations, routes is the evacuation zones, and once we get the zones established here, hopefully before the fire, my goal is to have done before the fire preseason meeting, we'll already be working on, um, those hazard assessments through the lands committee and the all land group for land tender, we'll all be in there, we'll establish those, those hazard zones, uh, more specifically, so that everybody has, has conversation as we move forward of what we're going to do for everything.
If we can before budget time, and I'm thinking about it, it'd probably be best to put something on Mara's budget, if we want to do something with software. So we can just try and do it before we finalize anything on budget, if we knew by June.
So we'll have, and what's nice is there's a, a group of us that are collaborating on what's going to be our best, what's going to be the best to get the most data out as soon as possible, and make it user-friendly for us too, so it's easy for everyone, not just one specific person who can use it. We want to make sure we all can use the data, uh, and share the data to everybody who needs it.
So we're out of time, what else do we need to cover? One clarifying point before we move on here, are we going to treat the entire county as one, or are we going to make zones, overlay zones?
I would like to see their map recommendations before we make that decision.
You're going to have that done?
I'm meeting with lands this week.
So, but this year, next year, two months?
Oh, I'm, I'm, this year.
Well, I'm trying to proceed to the comp plan?
I understand. Um, right now, I would say all one, and then we can, as long as I can go back and say, here's the new map, you do that, I don't know.
But what we just talked about was...
What you have right there is what we've established in the past, because that came from Stephanie, so.
Lauren.
Lauren's talking about. So we could utilize that one for now, but I'm telling you, it's going to be different once we update, um, and really discuss those in the lands committee with land tender and everything else.
Okay. I think there needs to be different zones. You can't just do one, because we're going to have an extreme, we're going to have a moderate, we're going to have a low.
This is sort of broken up into different polygons already, that's why it's different ones, so we could utilize that one. But we're going to really get into the detail again, and we're going to revamp the whole thing with, if you're in this polygon, this is extreme, moderate, whatever it is. Um, and then we'll take into account all of those areas that, you know, they're not really, because it's property that's taken care of, and that polygon's a different, right? That's what we have to do. That's going to take a little bit, because we're going to go piece by piece as we go through the county, um, like you did before last time, it took us about four months.
So my next question, just to throw out there and think about it, is, Cinda, do we need anything that would be like a moratorium until we get some of this done? That we're not putting subdivisions in areas until we actually rate these?
I don't know. That would, it's up to you. Is this an emergency situation? I mean, do you need the definition of where moratorium could be applied?
I don't know, and that's why I'm putting it out there. Let's think about that, we'll talk, I think, with council.
Yeah, my original thought, well, my quick thought here is, we already have the wildland urban interface fire protection plan requirements, um, we have some building codes. Um, I don't know that you want to stop, I mean, it's the building code that is the end result here. So do we want to stop building in Valley County until then?
Can't answer that right now, I don't know.
It wouldn't just be subdivisions. Subdivisions are basically taken care of, it would be the building permits.
Think about that, how much different it would be from what we currently have. And I think maybe we should put a survey out to the community on some of this information. I think maybe if we work with McKenzie, we'll see what the community wants. You know, do you want us to, you know, do all of this work on behalf of the community and make sure that we are fire-protected in the future? Some people may say, no, I don't want that, because it's so expensive. Others would hopefully say, yeah, I've seen what's happening in California, and we need to do something. What's your opinion?
I am all about transparency, but I don't believe the community has the expertise that these three gentlemen sitting in front of us do. And so I think they need to be our key points of information, and then we take it and decide how that should be implemented within the, with the community. I mean, they can hear this, we're on YouTube, they can always email us. Um, I'm, I worry that that will just deter our cause and, um, take up more time.
I'm all about people with brains, not going to bring me data. Okay, thank you, we're out of time. Thank you, thanks for all your work and all the discussions, so.
Madam Chairman, before we move forward, can we just get a few of the agreements signed, the MOUs that were presented this morning, and the road department has one agreement that was approved on, on the first, the warranty extension, that a second page was not signed that he would like to have signed, and then be allowed to leave?
Any chance we could just take a five-minute break and do that during the break?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Great.
Madam Chairman, Chairman, we're off mute.
Hey, welcome back. So the next is, is a discussion, um, on whether we're interested in joining a review agency board for this Dibnet Gold Project. The Forest Service has reached out, we have the opportunity to sit on an, an agency review board, and what they're working on is the construction-level designs of the water treatment plant, the tailing storage, the processing plant, the burnt log road, the fish tunnel, the water intake, the final storm pollution prevention plan, the final compensatory mitigation plan, compensatory mitigation plan, monitoring and mitigation plans under the EPA, um, EMMP, and engineering as-built for completed facilities. So I am on, I have been on their, is the advisory calls for the last few years. I don't have the expertise to do this kind of stuff. I mean, I don't know that Valley County should be involved in a lot of this, I mean, I'm looking at this going, these are really engineering, you know, kind of things, people with these types of certifications. So unless we just want to sit on that meeting, I have enough going on that I don't really just want to sit on a meeting. Um, I don't know, but I didn't want to say no without bringing it here and making sure that anybody else had a, an interest in this. Uh, just one second. We have to do a written, either acceptance or declination by Wednesday, so.
I'm okay with not being on it for now. I think if it's anything to do with county roads or whatever, we should probably have our engineer involved.
Yeah, agreed. And I do know that we will have to work with them on an MOU specific to county roads. Mm-hmm. I will send back a letter of declination then, and just let them know that for these topics, we're not interested, but would like to remain involved in anything else that's happening with them, so.
Maybe they could send us a...
I'm sorry, I, I missed part of that, because which agencies?
They're asking if we want to be part of an agency review board, but it's to do things like construction-level design of the treatment plants, the storage facility, the plant facility, I mean, all of their next steps for their as-built and their construction level design.
It's because they're all either...
Yeah. Well, we can say that outside of whatever this review board is. So I don't know what they need, what do they need a CUP for now?
Or anything besides the mine itself?
We already approved their, their facility over here on, on Worm Lake, right? Okay. Well, that might be a one-off conversation with them. So, um, I would move that we officially decline to serve on the Interested Agency Review Board for the Stignet Gold Project's environmental-related activities.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor? Aye. Right, next on our agenda, I'm so happy that you're here, with our strategic recreation plan out of the Recreation Advisory Council. Who is presenting?
So we're going to tag team up a little bit.
Come on up, you guys, let's just sit at the table.
Okay, will you make sure everybody kind of has a microphone?
I did send you guys the link to...
I did send you guys the link to this, but I just wanted you to have a paper copy as well.
Jeff, you need to sit next to the microphone.
You should be able to do this right here.
I think I think just share, maybe. Like some time has been spent here.
Good time.
All right. So I was just gonna start us off real quick. You guys talked to us, I believe, in 2022 and said we would love it if you guys set up an advisory council and we would like to work on a strategic plan with that advisory council to shape the recreation management and direction for the county. So here we are, two years later, we have our board. We got two members that showed up today. I'll just introduce our chair, Jeff Musso, I think everybody knows, and John Holland is one of our members as well. There may be one other person joining us, she was a little delayed on the roads today. So at any rate, you know, I just kind of wanted to give you guys just a little bit of an overview of where we are and then kind of what our next steps are, and then I'm gonna let Jeff talk because he is a much more eloquent speaker than I am. So, you know, like I said, the board was established in 2022 under your direction, and I think in early '23, you guys asked us to work with our newly-founded board to develop a strategic plan. Doug, would you mind pulling that up? Can we just pop that up on the screen? Presentation. So what we came up with was a five-year plan, and this is still in its draft form. There's several things that we're hoping to get your comments on, input on. Five-year plan that will shape how we start looking at our planning as well as our priorities. Moving forward in the plan, you'll see what our vision is, what our sort of mission statement is, you know, and then we came up with core values and sort of our most important current issues facing us. And then, you know, we like to think that the plan that we have come up with is both consistent with the comp plan that we have in Valley County as well as the needs of the public that we're serving and how their needs are changing and evolving. So there's bits and pieces of this plan that talk about visitors and residents both. One other thing that I was just gonna put out there is like our next steps, moving forward with this to the public, we have two different open houses planned in March. We're gonna do one at the EOC over here and then one at the middle school in McCall. Invite public to come in and give them a very similar short presentation and then, you know, have like a 30-minute question and answer period and an opportunity for the members of our board to basically just circulate and talk to folks about our plan. So, you know, if you guys are available, we'd love to have you join us for either of those. You know, like I said, one in each end of the valley.
Just give us dates.
You bet. And I'm still working on those. I have a date nailed down in McCall and they just changed it because it sounds like the middle school's gonna go to state boys' championships for basketball.
Important things.
I don't know why they cut us out for that date, but.
More of a recreation.
One of the things I also want you guys to consider is Larry and I were discussing, moving into this open house, we'd really like to have a copy of this available for people that would like a hard copy. So we're talking to maybe Preston the Pines about printing some bound copies similar to our comp plan. We do not have also some pieces of, you know, some documents on like a phone board for poster boards for visuals. We don't have that in our budget, and so we wanted to talk to you guys about that because I think this is as much your plan as it is ours.
Absolutely.
So looking at printing costs.
We probably have a little bit in our budget, but Joe, oh my gosh, what's Joe's name down here that owns Arrowhead? He owns, he printed all of the documents for the economic council free as a community benefit. He owns a printing company down in Boise. Might just ask, but you know, see if he would participate at some level, you know, just based upon.
Do you have his contact info or should I reach out to?
I do, probably. If not, Lindsay does.
If I could reach out to Lindsay. Perfect. Yeah, so the other thing we're gonna have is at those meetings is an opportunity for the public to give us some comments directly, but then also create a QR code that we can submit to, you know, our website, to our partner groups for social media and, you know, on their websites. It'll take us back to a comment page where people can add comments if they're inclined to, so.
You know what, Doug, I just had a thought. Do we have a budget for advisory boards that they could actually utilize for these types of things? We should probably do that this year when you're doing a budget, just do a separate advisory board, a thousand, you know, fifteen hundred bucks or something like that, so you have some, some small dollar amount for these types of things that come along.
That'd be great. We'd really, we'd really appreciate that. It's not, yeah, we don't need a lot, but like clean copies of the plans of.
You need a lot.
What we wanna.
We'll take it out of Larry's.
We start, we start with a thousand dollars, you know, what can we do? We can do a lot with a thousand dollars for printing. No, that's great. So at any rate, I'll let Jeff chat, he's gonna walk us through, you know, the presentation that we put together, and there's some really cool graphics. We had a lot of help from Mackenzie Kramer on putting this together. So I just wanted to give both our board members, which are all volunteers, and we've spent a lot of time on this, as well as Mackenzie, some kudos for their help.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for the invitation to come present this morning for the last really year and a half since we took on the work with putting together a strategic plan for Valley County on recreation. We've met monthly and most of our members have been there at each of the meetings, and there's been really a focus on coming up with what, what's in the plan. And we've really started, although there was some information in the comp plan and the strategic plan for Valley County, it wasn't to the degree that we wanted to see for recreation. And so we started with things like vision, what the mission of the recreation department is. We looked at what a new brand would look like, and that's where you see the life in motion guiding recreation for all generations, which we think is, is pretty dang catchy. And so that's kind of where we started, but it really was a group effort between the council that worked hard on it and the recreation department between Dave and Larry to put this thing together. And then, once we got it done, we had a really nice set of words, but Mackenzie Kramer came in and did the magic in putting the photos and some of the graphics together that really showed up in the, in the draft plan that you've seen. So I really appreciate her help. And I've just listed in the little box at the bottom on the introduction slide, names of the people that are on the Recreation Advisory Council. And like Dave said, we've been in place a little over, right at two years now, so it's been, it's been a good run.
Sorry to interrupt, but as a newbie, how did you come up with, with the people to sit on the?
Well, we did outreach. We thought we were gonna be lucky if we could fill seven or eight seats, and we ended up with, I think, just shy of 30 applicants that were interested in being a part of the process. And so then Larry and I interviewed everybody that had shown interest, and we kind of put together a list of folks and sent them to the commissioners, and the commissioners reviewed them and then selected the nine people that we ended up with from there. So I think it's really neat, we have a good blend of folks from throughout the valley. We're still a little lacking on some of the far out areas, you know, as far as like the south end of the valley or, you know, areas further out like Yellow Pine. But the group that we have really represents a very diverse group of folks, a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different experience levels. So I feel very good about the group that we've put together, and it really, really helped us a lot.
We plugged in to make sure that we had all different types of recreation represented as well as areas of the valleys.
Exactly.
There's a couple things on the commissioner letter when you get there.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to spend some time on that because that's from, from the commissioners, and we need to make sure that's right and that you agree with that before we hit, we hit public with that.
Commissioner Caldwell needs to be put on there.
But we've already, so we've already, we've already done that, so, yeah, the, the draft plan, I think you've got in front of you, was we ran that in November and we haven't changed it since. So anyway.
The percentage of public lands is not correct either.
Seventy-six? That came out of the comp plan.
That's probably old, because if you look on Headwaters Economics, we're about eighty-nine percent.
Is it? Eighty, I thought it was eighty-eight federal and then three percent, something like that, state.
Yeah. Headwaters Economics always keeps up to date.
I just looked at the same numbers on Headwaters recently, so.
Other than that, that one.
Just a couple things, I think the vision state, can you go back up there? One second. The vision statement's important, to be the model of excellence right on providing a wide range of well-managed outdoor and indoor, so the plan covers both, both outdoor and In harmony with responsible resource stewardship and responsive to the needs of the public. So one thing we've tried to do, we did a survey, we did a survey, Dave put the survey together, we went out to get information on the public with regard to recreation as we were putting it together. Now we put it together as a draft, we go back out to the public and say, you know, just give it a review and tell us any comments and things like you, you want from that. So anyway, I think we have a, we have a strong vision statement. We looked at other vision statements and recreation plans across different counties and areas in Idaho as well as other areas in the, in the Intermountain Northwest, so I think we got that right. And then on the next, the next one, we decided we'd really like to come up with a brand, something to kind of sizzle, sizzle this up a little bit, so to speak. So life in motion, transform the power of recreation regardless of age or ability, celebrate the joy of movement in all its forms, from exhilarating adventures to exercising with friends. We invite everyone to embrace the abundance of recreational opportunities that enrich lives and foster well-being throughout our built-in natural environments. So you'll, you'll be seeing more of that, and certainly our life in motion, we think should ring a bell, so to speak, with people. So as we, as we started this, we, before we looked at, you know, kind of what the challenges were and things, we, we tried to define what the core values were around recreation and people that work, participate, plan, recreation in the, in the, in the area. And we came up with, we came up with five things here, teamwork, stewardship, inclusiveness, sustainability, and social responsibility as the core values we wanted to reflect, reflect in this plan. And a couple things along these two woven in there is, we wanted probably a more of a focus on the residents in Valley County as opposed to visitors. We didn't want, we didn't want our, the strategic approach specifically catered to visitors. It's really the people that live here and the people that pay the taxes here, the people that see the economic influences, and the people that probably mostly participate in a lot of the recreational opportunities. So we made sure that was reflected as we define those core values and as we move forward in putting together the plan.
The only thing that I questioned, and you just brought it up, but nowhere have we talked about the economics of recreation in Valley County. And so that was, I was a little surprised that we hadn't highlighted, you know, this is a huge part of the income for everyone that lives here in Valley County also.
That's part of what we were kind of discussing under sustainability, is that fundraising and also the economic component for our community is part of that sustainable component. You know, I think like one of the best quotes that I've seen as we were looking at different plans, this was modeled after, was basically like, we're developing these amenities for ourselves, we're sharing with the people who come to visit.
I like that, but, I'm gonna have a seat with us. And, and I do understand that, you know, and I respect that. I just want to make sure that people understand how much recreation adds to our sustainability as a county. It's, I mean, that's just a huge part of the economic driver that lets all of us live here.
We, we can strengthen that.
We can strengthen it, but we also need to figure out how to capitalize on that.
Yeah.
So the next thing we looked at, because we wanted, we kind of wanted, we wanted a focus for improvement, and in doing that, taking a look at the current challenges that exist around recreation in our area, we came up with, again, five things that we, we thought were really important that as we factor, you know, a strategic approach forward, that we, that we look at the problems that we have and the challenges that we have today. So growth and overuse of resources, what we kind of have there is a lot of areas that are overutilized and a lot of areas that are underutilized. And if you could kind of even that out with, with more of a strategic approach around things like access and, and opportunities, that might help on both sides of that.
Parking lots.
Parking lots, parking areas, vault toilets, I mean, things that make it possible to participate in different areas. Degraded water qualities, so in things that, that we do or plan to make sure that we focus on that, we are definitely, you know, with the, with Worm Lake and Cascade and Payette, the rivers and things like that, a kind of a water Mecca, so we want to make sure that we don't, we don't do things that mess that up.
When people question that, just bring up Lake Havasu. They allowed the muscle in, it killed their economy.
Yep.
We have to have clean water up here, people come.
Even the work on the mussels down in the Snake River, I mean, come by twin, have been a huge impact.
A little scary.
I mean, basically shut it down for, loss of public lands and access to public lands, really a focus around access and being able to get people out, lack of indoor recreation opportunities. So we talked about this a lot, I mean, our, our area really, is really focused a lot on outdoor recreation, but for residents that live here, you know, good examples today, not, not a lot of indoor things to do in inclement weather. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk about indoor recreation center, indoor recreation activities, we think that's a, should be a real focus of the, of our strategies going forward. And then just lack of available resources. And on this one, they, they brought up a good point this morning, so this, this really goes back to sustainability. So we've got a, we think we've got a pretty good plan. We think, you know, we've got thirty-some actions, around five focus areas that we'll talk about in a minute. But if we don't have the resources to do any of that work, you know, the plan's only worth the paper it's written on. And, and so to be sustainable, to have an effect, we, we do need resources, whether those are through all the work that we do on grants, whether it's through some county money, other things like that, it's important to be able to fund the activities that we've laid out in the plan.
Are you guys working with the group that's talking about the indoor facility?
Yes. Yeah, and there, I wanted to wait and hear what everybody had to say today, but we are very supportive of that. That is one of the, the main goals in the plan under, under our second focus area. We specifically call out indoor recreation facility or facilities, and we've met with Joanna and gone through that, we've met with Kurt and talked about that, so yeah.
Could you just explain a little bit your, your loss of public lands?
So that, that's really around, probably the main one is the state lands that are susceptible to trade or purchase, and includes, you know, lands around Payette Lake, includes lands at the Front Range, Jug, and then going down the valley. But just being able to, people do a lot of different things in those areas and to try to keep that open for access and available for recreation is what that's really about.
The whole plan moving forward, you know, as development is occurring on private property is a huge component of that, you know, gaining, gaining or maintaining easements that we have, whether it's our road or a Forest Service road or state road, that has provided public access to other lands adjacent to the valley is huge.
Yeah, it's not necessarily public land itself, but the access to it, our easements, so.
Oh, I definitely agree with the access to public lands, especially on our federally managed acres. I was, I think our public land acre, acreage is probably also gonna go up than they are ever gonna go down.
Yeah, we've, we've got two access points on all of West Mountain, with the growth of population in the valley, so we're just funneling more and more into these two. IDL's been really good about saying, yeah, we'll give you public access, we're always crossing Forest Service property, and that's a whole nother story that.
There's a group called the NAR Initiative out of, you know, Utah State that's really good about describing the issues that have faced communities that are larger than ours, where, you know, public land access has been blocked essentially, you know, by private where, you know, public land access has been blocked essentially, you know, by privatization and then development, because there were all these large chunks of land, you know, in the Wood River Valley that everybody was using as the access point to get into their favorite canyon or creek or wherever, and now they're fighting to get those back, and in a lot of cases, the county and the city are buying, are having to buy those, so trying to be preemptive and get those under our belt now.
Did that verbiage be potential for loss of public lands, or, because it's not currently a change, it might make it a little more explainable on what your thought process is.
So, in addition to looking up at the, the challenges, we also came up with several assumptions which are basically things through our experience we believe to be true. But you can see the second one there is about economics and the, the impact that recreation does have on economics in our area, which is huge. We came up with eleven of these assumptions, and I highlighted a couple that I think are, that are important. So, the economics certainly, we, we talked about just a second ago, but the increase in volume and variety of people coming to the valley and the increase of recreation that'll bring. We do believe recreation opportunities should be affordable to the residents that live here, and public access and open spaces are essential to outdoor recreation. And then lastly, and it kind of goes in line with the plan, but sustainable recreation doesn't just happen, it's intentional, it's based upon good planning and management and following, and whenever it's needed to change plans, make sure you're doing what, what you should be doing. So, after we got through all of that work, we really came with, well, what should we be doing, what areas need work done, and we came up with five focus areas. And we believe those areas, you know, are reflective of the issues and the challenges, are responsive to the input that we got from the community. Focus on maintenance first and then improvement. We don't think the right way is just to keep putting out new things all the time without taking care of what you have. And so, within the plan, especially focus area two, which is facilities and infrastructure, you see an emphasis on maintaining what we have before you go start doing new and shiny Recreation in harmony with responsible resource stewardship and really aligned with what we came up with the vision, mission, values, and assumptions. And then for each of the five focus areas, we have goals under those focus areas, each focus area, and for each of the goals, we have actions. So, that's where Recreation Department really comes into, is monitoring that goal and implementing those types of actions. So, next slide is a nice graphic that McKenzie put together for us, but it shows, it shows the five focus areas. So the first one is collaborative processes and partnerships. It's a realization that this isn't gonna happen by itself or with just the county, it's gonna be working together with other entities to bring these things forward. So, in this one, we talk about a number of initiatives and partnerships, federal, state, local, private, that can shepherd us towards achieving the goals. And we think, we think that's important, so there's, there's several, there's two goals in there, three goals in there, and several actions under each of those. Focus area two is about the programs and infrastructure. This is where we have the Indoor Recreation Center, which is under goal two, construct new recreation facilities and infrastructure aligned with public needs. And I think another one in there that there's been quite a bit of work done is goal number four, expanding motorized and non-motorized pathways. And I think that's reflective of what we have in the council. We have both non-motorized and motorized people, I don't know if that's exactly the right to say it, but interests, interests. And so, so it brings together everything, and we've had, we've had a, we've had organizations come talk to us both from the motorized world and from the non-motorized world, so I think we captured that in the work that we were doing there. Communication and engagement, this one's important, and we're doing a, we're doing a neat thing here, well, a couple neat things here. We're trying to increase volunteer opportunities, so things like trail stewardship, trail maintenance, get more volunteers involved, making it more, more enhanced, people know about these opportunities and take advantage of some of the, some of the effort that we can get from people. Also looking at doing a annual outdoor recreation public summit, where we bring everybody, advertise it to the community, kind of lay out what's going on, where we are on the plan, what's coming up. We can certainly identify things that we're looking for in volunteer opportunities, but that's, that's one of the actions that's in here. Focus area number four is conserving public recreation opportunities, protecting land and water quality. And then the fifth one is around financial stability, and that's really about the budget and having the money to accomplish the work that's been laid out in the strategic plan.
I'll put another goal underneath that for some type of a marketing plan or a donation pool, you know, some way, there's a lot of people up here that I think would, would financially support some of this work, and having a donor pool would be important to identify.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Okay, so, I wanted to make sure that we talked about this, so I put ten thousand words on this slide, which I apologize for, but I think it's important to see, for you guys to see what would be in that plan that everybody else is gonna see, so. I guess I got the first comment with, that was, make sure that we have the public lands number.
Department of Commerce may have an updated amount on the number of people living here also.
And when we looked at, that's the late, that's the latest I could find, but we'll go back and take a look before we...
Ed Waters may have that too. They, they end up doing all the demographics, they, they end up having a lot of information
I highlighted the third paragraph, I just thought that was kind of the meat of...
So having reviewed this, I think, I think it's a great plan. I think it's lacking in the protection of current private property, current landowners, with, as, as recreation increases, private property owners find more people coming onto their ground. I think this isn't so much of a regulation aspect as it is an educational aspect, making sure that it's known that, you know, with these Onyx maps, people see a road through something, people really need to pay attention to who owns it, if it is a public access or if it's private. Maybe this is under focus area number four, you know, preserving private, you know, preserving the rights of private property owners, making sure that they use, because I do know that recreation is a big part of Valley County, but we need to protect our residents as well.
Commissioner, I think that's a great comment. So, we, we've looked at, and we probably missed that, we, you know, to be honest. We looked at, you know, infringement, we looked at sanitary problems, we looked at trash problems, we looked at kind of people that extended their stays in different areas, but we mainly looked at that on, you know, kind of public properties, and it's exactly the same type of issues on, you see, that people see on private properties, so, yeah, we'll make sure that's in there. Yeah, some of, some of that is, we've worked, we've talked a lot about partnerships with private property, and, and, and you guys have worked with us on, DF has opened a lot of their property, we just groomed Red Ridge and, and West Face Parking Lot, and we've got agreements with them for a lot of that stuff. I think it's really important to talk a lot more about the property. I think the biggest challenge of this, and I'm probably the guy that brings it up all the time, this committee is a countywide committee. We want to always keep in mind Yellow Pine, Smith Ferry, Silver Creek Plunge, believe it or not, all, all these areas, we're trying, it's so difficult, that's our, that will probably be a next step, we do need to let them know they are part of this program, that, that's the main thing.
Yeah, the message is, you know, what we had envisioned when we did this a couple years ago, so I, I'm just, I'm thrilled that we're to this point, and that our board is just, you know, you guys are doing great work, I'm very excited about it. It's just a huge step forward for Valley County. We haven't focused on recreation as one of our assets, and it is one of our largest assets.
So, just in the, so if we're okay with that, yeah, we can...
I'm good with that message.
Okay. Just the next steps, so we'd like, you're okay to move forward with the draft plan so that we can go out to the public with it. Dave talked about the open house meetings that we're currently scheduling for early March. From that, we would incorporate comments from the public and anybody else and finalize the plan. We'd come back to you for authorization or approval of the plan, and we'd issue the final plan, we'd make sure that's on the websites and advertised and things like that, so.
And you've worked and with Sendetta, put it into the comp plan, referenced as a part of the comp plan. We are in DC the first week of March, so Dave, don't do anything that first week, please.
Then, we've got John and Emily here, both from the council members, if you guys have anything to add or say. I know Emily's up next, so maybe she's gonna save her work.
All honor.
No, it's, it's been a great experience to work through this plan and to reach out to the shareholders that we've been able to reach so far through organizations, and, and like Larry said, to think about the county as a whole. There's so much opportunity for county recreation, and we're just excited to move forward. Thank you for your input, thank you for authorizing this plan, this board, this has been a great experience, and we're to continue.
Very excited. I think when we started this, thought Larry and Dave, it was when Francie Wallace and Brush Creek was so full that they couldn't shove anymore in there, it was like, okay, we gotta, we gotta have a plan, we gotta figure out a way to disperse some of this recreation use into different areas, and I think that's a huge opportunity.
Yeah, one other comment, in the, this last couple months, we've written four or five letters of support to grants that the department has been putting in for, and we always try to voice that we're, volunteer group, citizens within the county and things like that, so it really adds kind of the, the voice of the people behind some of these requests, and I think that, I think that strengthens those proposals, so, requests, so. And it's interesting, but we mainly just have snow pictures in our presentation.
A lot more in the actual plan.
I was noticing.
A lot of other pictures here.
This year.
Okay, Emily, do you have something to add?
Um, well, we can wrap this up, and then I'll bring Lisa up for her next presentation, so.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, so do you guys want to reschedule those meet, the public open houses, like the second week in March? We were worried that if we went much beyond the second week in March, that we were gonna start bumping up against fall vacation times and...
I think the second week of March would make sense, yeah, 'cause the third week is spring break, so you're gonna lose people for that one, yeah. That would be great, that second week, so Monday night, we already have a meeting, Impact Area on Monday night, maybe a Tuesday or a Thursday, if you have anything that week that...
Madam Chairman, can I just ask a question? Are you expecting this to, where the public has the ability to communicate with the commissioners? Or, I guess what I'm asking is this, do you envision this be, being an official commissioner meeting?
No, no, these are just open houses, they're mostly just to talk to the public and answer questions, kind of a team day.
That the commissioners would be, or the Recreation Council?
The Council. The Council.
And the Recreation.
Thanks for the clarification. Commissioners would be providing moral support.
Need a lot of time. Determine if it needs to be adjourned as an official commissioner meeting.
I'm free all that week, so.
If it works, that the first week of March is the only time it works.
We're trying to avoid doing both of them the same week, based on everybody's schedules. Our boards have big coverage of both meetings, so, you know, what we're trying to do is have the first one, first week of March, and the second one, the second one. They have one down here for you guys.
Do you guys decide when? We'll be back on the fifth, City Council is the sixth in McCall, so that would be good for them, but...
Great, well, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you so much.
For the project so far.
Absolute thanks for all your hard work, exciting.
Good deal, well, I was gonna say, I'm not gonna move too far, but...
What is the next thing we're doing, anyway?
The next thing is just talking a little bit about future plans for the Lake Fork parcel, so, we at One Time had plans that were drawn up, everybody can find those plans at this point, that laid out sort of a park in the middle of the valley, since we have that parcel. Right now, it's just not being used for really much else. Having the pickleball courts come in has provided sort of an anchor for that potential park to expand, so Larry and I have talked a lot about what our vision would be for that, and again, now that we have people to help us figure out where we're going, we have more than just our vision for that project, and we started talking about it with Emily and her team at Epicos, and so she put together a proposal for us, basically, just to look at if we wanted to move forward on some additional design ideas.
Want it?
Do you want this, is this a little easier on the microphone?
Yeah, I can slide over.
I can use both sides of the table, too.
Oh, good, okay.
No, here.
Good luck. Doug has the maps that you sent us, so.
Yeah, they're, they're...
We're gonna connect on Friday.
Preliminary, but it gives us an overview to look at while we're talking about what we have to work with and where Dave and Larry want to see it go, where the board can weigh in, and what services Epicos can provide.
Okay. So we did, alls we got was this was a design for Lake Fork, so we don't have any information, so anything you can provide us would be great.
This is, this is the Q and A time. This is the beginning.
Okay. So, is the rec department requesting this? I mean, you just, what we're trying to do is create some type of a long-term plan for this area?
So we, so I'm Lisa Beck with Epicos Land Planning and Architecture, and we were approached by the board who just spoke before you to help them put together a broad master plan for the use of this parcel, and so, so we have a scope of services, just to review with you guys for a, a basic master plan to be able to follow.
I was just asking if that came through, 'cause I sent that last week so that you guys could...
See it.
We didn't get it, sorry.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Or they send it to one.
Yeah, it would be helpful, but in, in the scope of services for the, for the master plan is, we kept, we kept the proposal to, like, honestly, a very reasonable scope for what this is envisioning, and, and we're local, we're, and we don't believe in exorbitant consultation fees on this, so I think what we put together is, I mean, that's like very fair to be able to do a Q and A with you guys, hopefully we can do some of that right now, to be able to put the best foot forward and keep this as efficient as possible. and keep this as efficient as possible.
I'm thinking that Commissioner Caldwell has no clue, because this would have been her first blush with this. We own 160 acres. And have we contracted with your company to do this?
No, this is a proposal.
Okay.
At this point, so yeah, that's, that's really what we wanted to review with you today.
Madam Chairman, if I could ask Recreation Coordinator, Mr. Bingham, and you know when that was emailed and who it was emailing?
I emailed it to Gabby last week. Four packets.
We have hard copy, if you want.
I can give you a copy of mine. That would help.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, you need that, I have notes on mine. Where's Commissioner Thompson?
He is ill today.
Again, I just wanna restate, so, you know, we've talked a lot about what that parcel could be for years. And lacking any past plans that we had, we just asked for a proposal from somebody that had the skills set to design something like this. You know, what would it cost us if we wanted to look at building something like this? And obviously, the proposal's the first step, so that's where we are today.
And where would this budget come from? Who's budgeted it, is this for an upcoming budget year? What are you guys proposing as far as, 'cause this is not something we budgeted.
No, and I was gonna say, ideally, I think we would probably need to put this into our 26 budget.
That's always the first thing I ask.
This is smart.
Where is the money? So, I guess if I'm looking at this, really the master plan in the past, none of us know what was envisioned here. The only thing I've ever heard in my term, or time here, was eventually, when the road department leaves this area as far as excavation, there's gonna be ponds there. And so, doing something where there's outdoor walking paths, fishery, you know, we've got a ton of space on there that, that it will take septic, but it is very high water table. And so, doing something with an outdoor soccer field, you know, or baseball fields, outdoor recreation, that type for sporting events, those are the things that have been approached with me. We talked about it for dog parks. So, I guess that before we actually create this plan, you know, what has the recreation group looked at it? Is their recommendations from the recreation group, they're saying, you know, these are the things that we think that this could be used for. I'm a housing component, I would love to see a housing component in part of this, too. We certainly don't need 168 per site, you know, for recreation, but if there was a housing component there, too, where there's people actually living, playing, working in the same area, that would be huge also. And just, this is the first blush at this that we've talked about really seriously for a long time, so. Would love to have a plan for it, because we all throw out things once in a while, we could use it for this, that, or the other thing. High schools looking for a site, you know, it's a great site for high schools, we could partner with something like that, but. I don't, I don't know what that plan looks like either.
Right. We talked about this in our rec board meeting last week and, you know, I mean, it was a whole slew of ideas, from just like you said, fishing, to, you know, our fishing game representative was like, hey, an archery range, hey! You know, and it was, you know, amphitheaters, you know, campgrounds, what do we want this to become? And so, you know, again, we're in a proposal phase here, but we also need input from you guys as far as, you know, what would we like to see on that site as we're developing the proposal?
And I, I guess that, I don't know. I don't know what I don't know, I don't know what the community would hold, you know? Does this need to be something where we're actually out, we're asking our communities? You know, what would you like to see on this site? This is county land that, you know, all of its own, and so what would individuals like to see on something like this? This is a large opportunity. So, I think drafting something right now until we know what we want, it might be a little premature. So maybe we use this next few months before the budget in order to have conversations. What is it we would like to see there?
I think that's ideal, honestly.
What would we, what would the community hold? Because we have to change our CEP. We don't have the additional use permit here for anything other than what it is currently being used for. And have you talked to the road department to see when they're gonna be done mining on those?
Well, and that's one of the questions, is there's a lease on the back half of the property now? So, how long is that lease viable? How much longer is that gravel source viable? And then, are there other areas? And, you know, it varies depending on who you talk to in the road department, on what sources are still available on that site.
What lease is on the back half of the property? Missoula's site has a lease on it.
So, they've got a road through our property that's the access, and then the pits that are back there are being operated by contractor right now. Not my area of specialization.
Obviously, not mine either. Didn't know we had a lease on it, might be predate me.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a, an access issue that we've talked about and there's alternative access that comes around through kind of our lay-down yard that's in the back north portion, right in the middle of the parcel, behind the road shop and down by the deputy's warehouse, and comes back up. So there's other options as far as getting truck trafficking and out of that gravel pit right now. Thinking about, you know, expanded parking, we're gonna be out of parking for pickleball really quickly. Pickleball would love to see another nine-court structure in place in that area. And assuming that they might be able to raise the money, you know, that seems like something that would be a viable option in that location as well. You know, you mentioned dog parks and that's something that keeps coming up, walking pathway around the perimeter. You know, the, the property is very scenic, I mean, you got onto it. So, there's a lot of different types of opportunities, whether it's a playground for kids in the middle of the valley. You know, we'd like to think that sooner or later, we're gonna have bike paths that are coming from, you know, the carefree area that would connect down to Lake Fork area. So, you know, having some bike potential in there. Having, you know, again, playing fields, which is, seems to be the number one drawback for all of our athletic teams in the area.
Definitely need, there's an elevation change in there, too. And so, what can, what can, what can the lower portion hold? 'Cause that's where we're gonna, where we're gonna have a lot of our ponds and that kind of stuff versus the upper area, which would hold a building and septic. I, I don't know that we're to the point of doing this yet. I think we need a workshop with everyone that will be impacted by a decision here. So, I think recycling needs to be here, road needs to be here. You know, we need a larger conversation with the rest of the team, that would need to be in place, so that, and then I, I feel like it's a conversation with the community. These are our community-owned properties, and if Valley County's going to do something, I, I agree 100% that this is a great place for recreation, but I think there's lots of opportunities on that 160 acres. It's important that we have conversations with many. Lake Fork is, do I wanna put this politically correct, 'cause we are on camera? But it's like, when you start talking about an indoor recreation facility, it's, it's not McCall and it's not Donley. And so, it's kind of like that safe zone where everybody goes, that it isn't just for McCall, it's not just for Donley. And so, incorporating other opportunities might be an opportunity to do that, too.
Has any water testing been done to see what type of septic's it would allow?
We had a whole engineering study done, and they are going to have to be high zoot. I mean, there does, definitely would need to be some mitigation work done with new technology for septic, because we're so close to Lake Fork group, that standard septic's will not work. It would have to be the one that's there for the road department is a mounted system. And that's what that mound is, the berm, it's right beside the road. So, there would have to be mounted systems or new technology used, 'cause there is new technology.
I think you're headed in exactly the right direction, and in order for this proposal to be able to really be effective, it needs to have the markings like of a great client. And our great clients are very prepared when they come to us. And so, I think if we could still maintain efficiency and keep the budget, you know, in, like, definitely in front of mind, is to be as prepared as possible with all, with all of these things of what the building, or we call it the program, the programming of the space. Luckily, it's a hu, it's a huge parcel, and so I like hearing all these ideas, but I think you're exactly right of getting community buy-in and go through those before we, before we, you know, really enter into a full, you know, full contract together, is get everyone's ducks in a row. But if that could be something where there's a timeline to be able to get some of that information, I think that would be really helpful to keep this moving forward for everybody.
Our budgets, when they're approved, they don't go into place until October 1st. So, we won't be expending anything until after October 1st. And maybe the rec department can come back with us with a timeline for some workshops and just get people together and just start having these conversations.
Could those, could those workshops happen prior to October 1st, then? You know, in order to do that?
I would think the summer would be a good time to have that, come back with a proposal prior to the completion of the budget. But I think it also is gonna require some outside group conversations. Now, who else would maybe want access to this ground? I do know the high school's looking for a new high school site. Would that be possible on this? I don't know what their plan is, so working with the schools, working with new auditorium district, I don't know what their, where their site is, you know, who other, what other entities are looking at, at meeting.
I think a master plan is something that can be a living document, that has options and has phasing, that, that we can provide, you know, that, that can be part of the plan to have multiple options in a drawing, in multiple drawings. But just seeing, you know, it's a huge, it's a huge space, and, and who needs that space? And, you know, we may say, well, recreation only gets the front half. And, and those are the kinds of things that will be so helpful to, to go into the design process with some of those parameters. But then we can also have it be a little bit of a, of a living, moving, breathing thing that, you know, we could say, well, if we had 10 more acres, we could also do this. And then that's where the conversations happen between the roads and, you know, fishing game. And what, what does the pond look like? What does an archery course need to be? And so, some of that can come through the design process, but again, we definitely wanna be as efficient as we can and use our volunteer boards and things as much as we can, too.
Absolutely.
And frankly, some of my questions, too, that we could just whittle through today a little bit, while this is something that is, you know, over a year, over a year out in the consideration, but does Valley County operate parks or manage parks already, like anywhere?
We do, we have a campground that we operate as a park and then, you know, facilities that we have that are parking lots for the winter use, in summer use, right now. So, we don't currently have a park per se.
That was part of it, where. Yeah, and that's what I, that's what I was, like, figuring. And so, with this, it's almost like a new entity, and so how does that, on the, on the financial side and fiscal side, how does this, like, you know, we can draw pretty pictures, but it also needs to work for the county as well, too. So it's like, how does this operate? You know, as we look at these top figures from the community and stakeholders, how are we able to sustain it? You know, also, too. So that's, that's something we're obviously further on, but I do want that to be something where it's kind of a major bullet point that we, that we look at of knowing that there's some shouldering responsibility also, too, with each one of these aspects. And so, how do, how do we turn it into something where it does potentially have some income stream somehow for operation? Yeah, exactly. And so, like, each one of these things, so that's part of the big picture of lots of questions to, to work through.
Absolutely. It's a large conversation.
Absolutely.
But a good one.
Well, and I was gonna say, we would love to see a fieldhouse sitting next to the pickleball courts. And that was, I think, kind of one of the things that started, you know, this idea moving forward. And that may or may not be the right location for a fieldhouse, so.
My head is back there, so be careful what you say.
I know, I've talked to her about this. She's talked to our advisory board quite a bit about this, but like I said.
Well, we've talked, the Y, you know, the YMCA would eventually like to do something up here. There's, when you have this large of a parcel of land, it's really imperative that we do the right thing for long-term and not make short-term decisions. So they've always kept it for a reason, and some of that was mining a rock out of it. But as we move forward, it's just gotta be a long-term vision for what can be on this spot.
As I say, my understanding with the gravel is that there's one more small strip they're interested in from the county standpoint. Fortunately, that's just north of the pickleball courts under the trees that are on the site now.
All right, well, thank you. We'll take this under consideration in budget time and get some workshops on the, on the horizon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's neat. You as well.
All right, up next. Where are we at? legislature deport, this has talked about us, about the tax cancellation.
Good morning, commissioners. I will be brief, I just have a tax cancellation request for parcel RP 11N03E235420. This is tax cancellation number 24-10 for the year. And this instance, I'm asking for a cancellation of 60 cents worth of tax. The state of Idaho puts on forest protection charges on parcels throughout the county. They use flight, they fly over parcels and visually determine whether or not they need fire protection charges on them or not. And then they do like a blanket fees application. We put about 25,000 fees on two parcels within Valley County. That includes both forest fire protection and the FPA Act charge, so there's two different types. This particular parcel is a common acre parcel in a subdivision, and therefore, the value of that parcel is divided up amongst the owners in the subdivision, but special fees are not divided that way, so the special fee stays on the parcel. This subdivision does not have a property owners association or a homeowners association to be able to take care of fees like that. We're talking three years' worth of taxes and the total plus penalties and interest is 60 cents.
Oh, my goodness.
I have been in touch with Idaho Department of Lands and they are going to remove this fee in the future, but between now and then, we don't have anyone to take care of the 60 cents, and so I'm asking for your permission to cancel that amount.
Might bankrupt it.
Potentially.
It's crazy.
I would move that we approve tax cancellation 24-10.
A second. All in favor?
Aye. Easy peasy.
I can't even believe that they put such a minimal fee on.
I know.
I mean, that's just like, costs us more to do that than.
Right.
I'm doing it as approved, so I date it, today's date.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we're awarding the bid for the 2025 Good Pit Crushing.
Hi, again. Cut two of them.
All right, brought us good stuff. I don't have Elts knife anymore. Bring me a knife. Oh, don't do that. It's the microphone.
It's not wrapped around your leg or something?
Okay, first up is premier aggregates. So I read it and if you'll make a note on the back of your, or a note somewhere, so that you record these. And then we will go off whatever lowest bid is.
You might wanna go over the requirements first. They're supposed to supply a bid bond, insurance, all that other stuff with this.
Where do I have that information? Are you gonna go over that?
It's supposed to be supplied in that. It's supposed to be supplied in that.
Okay. It's inside the document?
Yes. That's usually the first thing that's looked at to make sure. I think it's on the first or second page, the requirements for bid.
Okay.
To be supplied with the bid.
So the invitation to bid states that 5% bond or other acceptable surety is required. Each bid is sealed and marked. So it's just the 5% bond. specification of bid forms may be obtained from our office. So it's just the 5% bond.
Just that, then, yes.
Okay. So premier aggregates. Their signature page, so their bond should be in here if they are supplying a bond. This is my first one. Hot darn. Post-insurance. So it does show that a bond has been secured from post-insurance. 5% of the total bid. Okay, so they have three bids, one, two, and three. Bid one, 25,000 tons of three-quarter, a road mix aggregate is $10 for a total of 250,000. Bid two is 15,000 tons of four-inch minus granular subbase at $8 a unit for 120,000. And there's, bid three is approximate LS mobilization is $20,000 for a total one, two, and three of 390,000. And that's premier aggregates. The second bid is from Rocky Mountain Maintenance. This one does not have a bond. Does not call out a bond in the bid requirements on this one either.
No bid on with that one?
So there, the bid, our request is in there, but they do not, they do not have a insurance or a bond in here. So they are not viable because of that, correct?
Better, yeah.
What are the requirements?
Requirement.
Okay, so the only viable bid then is the premier aggregates at 390,000. I have a motion to.
Hold on, hold on. That's more than what I have budgeted.
Okay.
So if you two want to agree to that bid, I will work with the crushing outfit to get it down to where it's in my budget.
So that you would reduce the number of tonnage in order to do that?
Yes.
What is your budget?
I'm right at 300.
Okay.
But take off some four-inch, some three-quarter, and, you know, it's up to them. They might have based that price on that. Got this huge lump sum of material, they might up their prices a little bit if I downgrade it, but all I can do is ask, so.
It'll stay within your budget in order to.
I gotta stay really close to it.
Okay. I would move that we approve the premier aggregates with the condition that Jeff worked with the contractor in order to come within bid, or within his budget of the 300,000. Second. I moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Hey, do you take these back?
I'll take those and a little copy of that, though. When I'll, well, we gotta do a contract and everything now, so.
Yeah, so on, so on that.
Keep making me come up here, I'm gonna knock that thing over.
Hey, we're keeping you out of snow plow.
Was there a spot on there for you to sign?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
I don't know either.
So it should be.
Acceptance.
Madam Chairman, yeah, there should be an acceptance, right?
Oh, right there, initial and.
I'm still in trainee.
So am I.
No, you're not. You better not be trainee, so.
That might have been the only one, except this.
How's it going on snow plowing?
Looking pretty good. I'm going out early with, I'm not plowing now, so we had our next surgery guy come back with full release, so I'm just out, out three or four o'clock in the morning running routes and helping these two newer guys on their routes, and, yeah, it's looking pretty good. What do you think, Carolyn, are you gonna stick around?
Can you?
Don't ask her that yet.
Oh, she's gonna stick around.
Uh, will you notify the other companies?
Yep, I'll be getting hold of those later today. All right, thank y'all.
All right, that is, our agenda item for 11:40 was canceled, so that will be all, and we will adjourn until this afternoon at 1 o'clock.